Alright, let's get this over with. Onto chapter seven homework. Just gonna give you a few seconds to look at this. Five, four, three, two, one. Have you memorized the universal resource locator? Great, I'll turn to you. Okay, sorry, I, I, I thought, I thought it'd be funny. Question one. Long question. Really long question. Michelle Manufacturing's single finished goods warehouse is located across the street from its manufacturing facility. A recent study of product sales showed that most product lines are sold primarily in a single geographical locate region. For instance, the Wilimet line is sold primarily in the northwest while the Neus line is sold primarily in the southeast. To reduce delivery time to customers, the company has decided to close the existing warehouse, at least five smaller regional warehouses, that will each serve a single product line. Okay? Now that we know that, we have section one. This is a multi, a multi-step question. But the first one isn't too bad. We need to classify the warehouse costs under the current single warehouse scenario as a unit level, batch level, product level, customer level, or organizational level. In this instance, we know that it is at an organizational level. And the reason we know this is because since the single warehouse provides services for all the products, customers, and regions, it is an org, it is organizational level. Because it provides for all of us. The second question, the second part of this question. Don't worry, it's not that many parts. Classify the warehouse costs under the proposed multi-full warehouse scenario as a unit level, batch level, product level, customer level, or organization level. In this instance, it's the product level. The reason we know this is because each new regional warehouse will provide service for a single product line. Therefore, because they provide for a single product line, it will be cost, the warehouse cost will be a product level cost. And that is the end of question one. Question two. Oh, gosh, this is gonna be quite the doohickey if you ask me. I'm just gonna put it all here. Cause trying to explain it without showing you the graph is a nightmare. Okay. Using the table below, select X in the column that corresponds to the type of activity level referred to in each scenario. Unit, batch, product, batch, product, customer, organizational. Those are the five. And then the Xs, okay? Are gonna be looking a little weird. So to save us the hassle, I'm going to be deleting these section so that it is much easier on the eyes. Okay? Much easier on the eyes, cause this looks like a nightmare. But that's okay. If there is a problem, all we have to do is fix it. Or solve it, depending on the context, mind you. And as long as we can do that, we shall prevail. So for this one, this is a batched activity level. Because we're setting up a machine for the production of 500 units, okay? A batch of units. This one here, conducting seven minor for local doctors and the benefits of a new drug is a product activity level, because we're trying to sell drugs to doctors, guys. I know, crazy. But that's what the pharma is. They try to sell drugs to doctors so they can recommend it to you. Then we have embossing a company logo on every product made. That's a unit. It's made on every product, on every unit. That is the type of activity level that it is falls under. Now that we know that, seating a party of 11 at a restaurant. Well, you see, that's a batch. Okay, those 11 people are a batch. Okay, but don't misspell it, okay? It's with an A. Not the other letter. E, providing technical support for two years following a sale. And in this case, it is a customer activity level, because we're not really selling a product on technical support, no, no. We're helping the customer to see us as the good person in this situation. Everyone get it? Good. Up next, managing a corporation accounting department. In this instance, that is a organizational activity level. Reason being, we're doing the whole corporation's accounting. And it's not just one little section. G, adding a, attaching a price tag to each product. Since we're talking about individual products, that is a unit activity level. H, issuing an invoice. That would be a customer activity level, because we are sending invoices to customers. Other ways to communicate with the customers include their email, text message, phone call, and fax machines. Up next, developing a corporate advertising campaign. That is organizational. Okay, we're trying to build into the myth that our corporation is one of reputable behavior and worthy of the trust of the consumer. And then finally, recalling a defective product. Well, that's just at the product level. It's given to us in the question. Simple, simple? Good. Question two, and question three. Okay, let's move this out of the way, so that we can have more spacing on. Okay. Let's start with each section. This is a multi-step problem. And because of the multi-step problem, we're gonna have to take this in multiple steps. Therefore, if I go back and recheck this section, that's completely on me. Now, the good news is that this actually isn't, Ctrl Z. This actually isn't the hardest section, it's actually quite easy. But it just has all the steps and the issue with a lot of steps in the question is that they tend to drag. Assembly. Machine setup and calibration. Product inspection and raw materials storage. Alright. Eric Parker has been studying his department's profitability reports for the past six months. He just completed a managerial accounting course and is beginning to question the company's approach to allocating overhead to products based on machine hour. The current department overhead budget of 1,140,000 is based on 40,000 machine hours. In an initial analysis of overhead costs, Eric has identified the following activity cost pools. Cost pools, expected costs, and expected activities. In these instances, from top to bottom, on the left is cost pool. Then the four sections are product assembly, machine setup and calibration, product inspection, and raw material storage. The expected costs from top to bottom are 600,000, 320,000, 90,000, 130,000, and the total expected cost is 1,140,000. As for the expected activities, we have 40,000 machine hours for product assembly, 2,000 setups for machine setup and calibration, 1,500 batches for product inspection, and 500,000 pounds for raw material storage. Now that we know that, we need to calculate the company's overhead rate based on machine hour. Let us begin. This should be, well, quite easy. Alright, so for section A. Ignore the laughing in the background. That's not mine. We know that it is going to be $1 million plus 140,000. Ah, it keeps flickering for me. I know it doesn't flicker for you. Cause I take it out, but it does flicker for me and it makes the mouse clicks a little bit infuriating. You know what? We're just gonna write the K here. Close enough. That, assume this is K. Good. And then, we need to divide this by the machine hours, which in this case is 40,000 machine hour. Which in this case is equal to My bad, over, I forgot to write over machine hours. And that is how you solve for the overhead rate. And now we need to get to B, the product assembly. In this case, it's not just product assembly, it's all of them. So it's product assembly. PA. The machine setup and calibration. Up. And calibration. The product inspections, or PI. And the raw materials storage. In this case, we know that the product assembly is equal to the 600,000. Oh, this is going to slow down, isn't it? Yes, it is. Divided by 40,000 machine hours. And what that will give you is 15 dollars per machine hour. Up next, we go to the machine setup and calibration. We're going to be alternating colors, just so we can see it more effectively. In this instance, it is going to be 320,000 dollars divided by twen, 2,000 setups. And that will give you thou, uh, 160 dollars pure. Divided by setup. And then for the product inspection, it is 90,000 divided by 1,500 batches with an A. And that will give us 60 dollars per batch. If you guys are wondering why I'm writing so slow, it's because my screen keeps flickering. Maybe I need a better processor. That toss money. And I'm not paying for that. And then finally, for raw materials storage, I'm gonna do it up here, so that we have space. The raw material storage is as simple as 130,000 dollars divided by 500,000 batches, I mean pounds, 500,000 pounds, my bad. And that will give you, L B. And this will be giving you 26 cents per pound. That should be good enough. Now that we solved that, we have question three done, only seven more to go. I know, that took a bit longer than I originally wanted it to, but sometimes things just drag on. Okay? Let us continue with this work. Is that correct, Tyler?
Yeah, it is.
Good. So let me open the Notepad. We have the Eric Parker thing again. And we are adding extra steps. Okay, these extra steps include starting here. And luckily, whoever made this textbook decided to help us out a bit by giving us the exact same hours and numbers to work with. The only difference is that he or she adds a new table to make it just a few more steps that we need to conclude. After this, we'll be going through the vocabulary in the textbook. Because it just makes sense to do that, as a lot of the first exam was true, false, and the vocabulary. A, we need to calculate the total overhead allocated to each component under the traditional method using machine hours as overhead application base. And we need to calculate the total overhead allocated to each component under activity-based costing. And these are the new numbers we're given. Take a, maybe a second or two to write them down. Just pause the video and you should be golden. Let us continue. So to get the total allocated overhead, so A. The advantage of this is that we can actually use the previous numbers, if you have them written down, it's easier to follow. And suddenly, I have a night mode on, that's fine. It will be 1,000. Oh. Multiplied by 28. Oh. Uh, my apologies. My sincerest apologies, I seem to have skipped a step. Let's go back. To solve for A, we need to find the total overhead allocated. To do that, we must first find the dollars per machine hour. To do that, we take the numbers we already had, which is 1 million dollars plus 140,000. Uh, there's just something about saying 1 million dollars, it's so fun. I don't know. I think it's fun. Divided by the 40,000 machine hour. And we already calculated this, but it's just because if this is the context of a new question, we wouldn't have calculated it yet, so I'm showing it again. Machine hour. Machine hour. Correct. You'll put this into your calculator and you should get what happened there. I don't even want to know. What one should get is 28.50 divided by machine hour. Simple enough. Now that we have that, we can solve for the total overhead allocated of components 3F5 and T76, which are given in the question. We know that in the context of machine hours, we have components at 3F5 at 1,000 and component T76 at 10,000. Therefore, to solve this section, we just take 1,000 and 10,000. If this will ever stop flickering, that'd be really nice right now. And 10,000 here. And multiply it by this number here. Which I will just show off like this, because the screen keeps flickering and probably won't let me write it. We put these into our calculator, or because we're multiplying by one, by one followed by a bunch of zeros, you just need to move the decimal place a little bit. This will be 28.5K. And the other one will be the same number, the only difference, it'll be 285,000 instead. And that is the allocated overhead in dollars for the machine hour component of 3F5 and T76. This is the, the top one is 3F5, the bottom one is T76. I hope that makes sense. Cause if it doesn't, then we have a problem. And that is section A. Now we need to move on to section B. And in all honesty, once again, it's just a lot of steps. The actual work is not very hard at all. But however, because there are so many steps involved, I hesitate to believe that this question is going to be completely on the test. I know he's gonna ask sections of it, most likely. Or he's gonna ask some question about the theory of the question, using this as the basis. But what that basis is going to be, or the time being, is still unknown. So for section B. What's doing that? Okay. We have the, to get the MH setup, batch, and the pounds again. We already got those in the previous question. We know that for product assembly, it was 15 dollars per MH. Why does it keep doing this? I don't know. And then for the machine setup and calibration, it was 160 dollars over setup. Then for the product inspection, it was 60 dollars per batch. Okay? Come on, please hurry up. Thank you. And then for the raw material storage, it's going to be 26 cents per pound, as we solved last time. In all honesty, I could have just kept those values there, but hindsight is 2020. L B. Some of you, if the math is easier for you, just do 0.26 dollars. It's the same value, it doesn't change anything, and it does keep the the variables consistent. I just used 26, I just use cents out of habit at this point. But since we now know what this is, we have found a way to make this infinitely easier for us. That's right, I said infinitely, because we're not going to be struggling too much anymore. So now we have to set it all up. Product assembly. Does that mean? Yeah, that's what it means, it's finished. Let me see. How long is this? 54 as opposed to 20, okay, so that means that this can be cut. Okay, cancel. Hold on, let me just close my VSDC really quickly. That's what was causing the screen flickering, it was the VSDC, figured it out. Realistically, I should just not let that run while working on other things. But what can you do, right? Nothing, you just have to keep going. But now we, let's see if it's faster. Product assembly is equal to 15 dollars, which is the original product assembly from part, from part one. Multiplied by 1,000 or 10,000, depending on your situation. And for that, we'll get for the 3F5 will be equal to 15,000 dollars. And then for TF6, that will be equal to 150,000 dollars. Now we need to go for the machine setup. In this instance, it's going to be 160 dollars multiplied by 40 or 20. The 40 and 20 come from the table given to us in the question. Let me just open that really quickly. 40 and 20. These two right here. And for that, we'll get for TF5, for 3F5 will equal to 6400. And then for TF6, it's going to be equal to, by the way, I'm assuming you wrote these down, cause if you're not writing it down, then I don't think you're really practicing it. So this, 64,000, and the other one for TF76 is equal to 32,000, because it's just half of what TF5 was. I mean, 3,200 and TF5 was 6,400. Now for product inspection, it's going to be 60 multiplied by 20 and 10. So for 3F5, that is equal to 100, I mean 1,200. And for T76, that is equal to 600. Excellent. And then for raw material storage, that will be 26 cents multiplied by 10,000 and 10,000. These numbers come from the same table in the question. 10,000, 10,000. Ta-dong. So there, we, we know that both are equal to both equal And now, to get the total cost, we need to add up all of the 3F5s and all of the T76. Now luckily, we've written them all down. However, for the sake of making space, I'm only gonna leave the 3F5s and the TF6, and the T76s for the sake of space. Now let me fix this T7 quickly, because it doesn't look as nice as it should. There we go. And these F should look a little more fa, extended. Like that. Okay? So now let's erase the sections that don't say 3F5 or T76. And once we do that, you realize just how much space we actually take, we're actually using every time we do this. Okay, this is why we record these on, on snipping tool, instead of recording on a piece of paper and just uploading camera footage. So now that we have that, we'll take the sum of these, so we add up, so sum of 3F5 of three F five is equal to fifteen thousand plus six thousand four hundred plus one thousand two hundred plus two thousand six hundred, which is equal to two thousand, two hu, twenty-five thousand two hundred. Twenty-five thousand two hundred, and this is in dollars because it's the total costs. And then for the total costs of T seven six, sum of T seven six, we're adding hundred and fifty thousand, three thousand two hundred, six hundred, and two thousand six hundred together. And we are getting this number right here, a hundred and fifty-six thousand four hundred dollars. And those are the total overhead allocated for components three F five and component T seven six. These numbers right here. That question took a lot longer than originally anticipated. Not gonna lie. Realistically, it should not have taken this long. Let's just erase all the ink here. And restart with a brand new canvas again. And up next, we go to question five. That's another one of these. Okay. Okay. Let's open this up and continue on where we left off. Let me just post something really quickly. Harrison Brown. Okay, so we're studying Harrison Brown, the book publisher now. Okay. So Harrison Brown is a book publisher that reissues old titles. The company offers these books with either a standard machine glued hardcover or a deluxe hand embossed, hand-stitched leather cover. That is super nice. Harrison Brown currently allocates overhead to the books based on direct labor hours. A recent activity analysis conducted by the controller revealed the following information. That in the standard edition and deluxe edition, the units produced were five hundred thousand for the standard and eight thousand for the deluxe. For the directly for hours, it was five hundred and fifty thousand for the standard and thirty thousand for the deluxe. For the printing press hours, it is ninety thousand and for the deluxe edition is one thousand six hundred. And then for the sales order, they're both equal at ten thousand orders. What do we need to do? We need to calculate the following for each of the projects and we need to calculate six things. I times two is the direct labor hours per unit. Then we have I, we have double I times two is equal to the printing press hours per unit. And then for I, for triple I times three, times two, we have the sales orders for, per unit. And in this case, we need it for the standard edition and for the deluxe edition. Once we can put these together, we shall be golden. Okay? So what we need to do is make a table. But I'm gonna be filling out the table here. That way we can save both time and space as I, nobody wants to see me attempt to build this table again on by hand. So let's get direct labor hours per unit for standard edition, which is going to be essentially the numbers just divided by each other. So the direct labor hours are the, for, for standard edition are the five hundred and fifty thousand divided by the units produced, which in this case is five hundred thousand. And that will give us one point one D L H. And that is what we put first here. Point one D L H per unit. I think you see where this is going. Up next, we have to do this for this deluxe edition. And it's the same concept. We have thirty thousand direct labor hours. Direct labor hours divided by eight thousand units. And this will give us three point seven five direct labor hours per unit. And to make that a bit more clear, it is three point seven five direct labor hours per unit. Okay, I'm gonna remove that for the sake of making sure it still works out. Printing press hours per unit, and I think you see the pattern. So let me do the printing press hours per unit. So P P H D V U is equal to ninety thousand because that's what it says in the graph, that the printing press hours were ninety thousand. And we divide it by the number of units, which is five hundred thousand. I think I've made my case here. And that would equal to, and instead of stammering to write it, let's just write it up here. Zero point one eight printing press hours per unit. And then for the deluxe edition, so for the deluxe edition, we're going to get, based on the table, the printing press hours are one thousand six hundred. Therefore, we do one six zero zero divided by eight zero zero zero. And we get zero point two P P H per U. Okay? And we'll fill this out here. Zero point zero two P P H per unit. Great job. Okay, great job. And then we need to get the final one for the sales orders per unit. We know from the graph, from the table, that the sales orders for the deluxe and the standard edition are both ten thousand. Okay? That make sense? Well, I can't actually hear you because I'm recording this in advance, but I'm gonna assume you made, that made sense. Okay. A really bad joke made in two thousand twelve notwithstanding. The sales orders are ten thousand for the deluxe and the standard. And we divide it by different numbers, however. In this case, we'll divide it by five hundred thousand. And in this case, we'll divide it by eight thousand. This gives us zero point zero two. That's not a theta, that's a zero. Order per unit. And this gives us one point two five order per unit. Excellent. So we'll put this in the, in the little notepad here, and it'll be zero point zero two order per unit. And the other one will be, what happened there? One point two five order per unit. And this little table here is the following for each product. And this is how we conduct the following information and put it all together. That's good? Excellent. Up next is a multiple choice question. Yay. You can tell I'm not excited by this. So we had to match the following statements to the appropriate terms. So first, activities that are performed for specific customers. That is a customer level activity. Second, a process of using activity-based costing information to manage a business's activities. That is activity-based management. Up next, the activities that are performed for each individual unit of product. That is a unit level activity. Four, activities that consume resources but do not contribute to the value of a product. That is a non-valued added allocation. In other words, you're spending too much money. A managerial tool that focuses on improving the efficiency and effectiveness of an organization's business process through radical change is called business process re-engineering. That was a really weird way to read that. A costing technique that assigns costs to objects such as products or customers based on the activities those cost objects require is activity-based costing. Simple. Super simple. A calculation similar a calc, wow, I was messed up. No, I didn't, I wasn't messed up. I just copied the wrong section. calculation similar to the predetermined overhead rate under traditional job order costing is an activity rate. Great. After that, we have the next one. This can also be referred to as product sustaining activities. That is product level activities. The examination of business processes to identify incremental changes that may reduce operating costs are the process improvement. Excellent. Three more, and then we are done with this question here. Activities that create the product the customer wants to buy is a value-added activity. We've said this multiple times, but here you go. Up next, activities required to provide capacity and to keep the business in operation. That is an organizational level allocation. And finally, activities that are performed all at once on groups or products is a batch level activity. Earlier in the assignment, I mentioned why certain things were cer, were the certain type of activities. And therefore, this is most accurately to be said, an explanation as to what I was saying earlier. Moving on to question seven. And luckily for us, or unluckily, depending on what you like, this is a multiple choice question. Act, with activity-based costing, the goal is to what exactly? What do you guys think it is? And the choices given to you are, develop a product cost that captures the amount of each resource consumed by the activities performed to produce a specific product. Develop a product cost that allocates manufacturing overhead to each resource consumed by the activities performed to a group of similar products. Develop a product cost that eliminates all waste such as machine downtime and defective products. Or D, develop a product cost by revenue allocations. The answer is A. Activity-based costing. The goal is to develop a product that captures the amount of each resource consumed by the activities performed to produce a specific product. I hope that makes sense. Up next, an activity that is performed for each individual unit of product is classified as a what? Well, see, we already talked about this earlier. It's a unit level activity. Because you're doing it to every individual unit as an activity. Yes, that makes, I'm gonna lie, a lot of these ones are just are, are very obvious. But they try to trick you by giving you other options that look correct. But in reality, there's only one of them that's correct, and you can figure it out as long as you remember what the activities are and what they mean. Up next, for a unit level activity, the total level of activity performed varies by what exactly? Do you think it is A, B, C, or D? A is proportionately with the number of units produced, inversely with the number of units produced, inversely with the number of units produced, and does not change with a change in activity. Or D, it does not change with a change in activity. The answer to this question is A. Proportionately with the number of units produced. Moving on to the final question of chapter seven. Uh, let me post. Activities that are performed all at once on groups of products is classified as A slash and what? Well, we learned earlier in this same session that when you operate at every product in one goal, this is a batch level activity because you're operating on a batch of products. That is the end of the chapter seven homework. All I have left to do now is to write down all of the formulas that the professor has asked us to remember for the exam. And quite honestly, when compared to chapter one, well, the first exam, more accurately, there are a lot less formulas to remember and more concepts to remember. Uh, brush up on your concepts. They will help you out in the long run. So let us get the equations started. First equation that he asked us to remember is this one. Budgeted production is equal to budgeted sales plus budgeted and ending inventory minus budgeted beginning inventory. The direct materials equals two A Q multiplied by A P minus S P. A Q is your actual quantity, A P is your actual price, and the sales price is the sales price. Then we have, this is actually direct material price variance. My apologies. Then for direct materials, quantity variance, we have S P multiplied by A Q minus S Q. In this case, S P is the sales price, A Q is the actual quantity, and S Q is the sales quantity. Up next, have the activity rate, which is equal to the total activity cost cost resources divided by can I type? Nope. There we go. To the pinky. Okay. Total activity driver volume. Up next, the allocated cost formula is equal to the activity rate multiplied by the activity cost formula is equal to the activity rate multiplied by the activity driver consumption. And then, the sales volume variance is equal to the flexible budget minus the static budget. Now, while I said that those are the formulas the professor wants us to remember, as you noticed when I was going through the questions, I, assuming you were paying attention, I used other formulas that he did not ask us to remember. Therein lies the question. We need to figure out which of these questions from chapters five, six, and seven will he be asking on the exam. We already know what three of them are. But he, he can pull from the entire last three chapters for this assignment. But we need to be very careful. I really hope you all do really well on your exams. And I hope you all pass your classes this quarter and move on to the next quarter or graduate. Have an Isaiah.